Good evening everyone and welcome to the October City Council Meeting for the city of Waynesville. So proud tonight to have our WCC crew with us, along with Mr. Wallace up in our video nest. Working with him tonight is Alex and also Savannah. And I had announced on my Facebook page that we will be streaming our City Council Meetings, but tonight there will not be a Facebook stream because we're having a little trouble with our internet. So be looking for the City Council Minutes Meeting tonight to appear on YouTube. And in fact, Tim, am I correct that that will be posted right after this meeting? And you can find that on YouTube under Waynesville, small r, six. Waynesville, small r, six. And simply look for the page and of course it will say Waynesville City Council. So hopefully next month, we will be streaming live and then also being on the YouTube channel. So again, thank you, Mr. Wallace. I'd like to call this meeting to order and then also before we do our roll call, I also say that we're really thanking tonight of our city clerk. Michelle Brown is having some medical issues and took care of some things today. And so we're thinking about her tonight and Stephanie is filling in and of course the girls are always here in the back. So we're thanking Michelle tonight. And I would also tell the City Council that Mr. Harold's mother has also had some medical troubles this week and we've been thinking about her. Okay? Would you join me at this time? Steve Lynch, would you give us the invocation and would you remain standing and we will have the Young Marines leaders in pledge allegiance. Steve?
You bow with me please. Father, we bow before you. We thank you, Father, for all that you are to us, all that you do. And Father, you tell us in your word to pray for our government. There's a reason for that. The decisions they make affect all of our lives, so we lift them up to you. We thank you for each council member, for our mayor, for their service. We thank you for our staff members here in this wonderful city and all those volunteers that make this place a great place to live. We pray, Father, for those that are struggling with physical issues. We do lift them up to you, Father, as a great physician. So be with this meeting tonight, lead and direct in every part of it. We're asking in Christ's name. Amen.
Sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda, but before we do that, I would like to add two things to your agenda tonight under special guest. Would you add D, Taylor Duncan is going to be with us tonight? And would you add E, Randy Becht is expected tonight. I do not see him, but he is expected.
I believe that's my fault there. I think I told Randy six and said, "Bye."
Okay, well, when he comes in, we'll work it in if that's, if that happens. So with those corrections, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion. Second by Clarence.
Don't we have to have a roll call first?
Yeah, roll call.
Oh my goodness. You should have stopped me. Counselor, this is your job.
That's right.
Okay. Can I go ahead and do this or?
Dark as gray.
Okay, we had a motion and a second, all those in favor of consent agenda, and I very much apologize. I'm really, I don't know, there's nothing wrong with me tonight, I guess I'm just tired. So could you, Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Sure. Mayor Hardman.
Here, I think.
Councilman Volker.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Curtis.
Here.
Councilman Brown.
Here.
Councilman Flack.
Here.
Councilman Honey. And Councilman Grass.
I'm here.
Okay, I actually saw Colonel Bowles come in. And would you step up here, sir? Everybody, I want to introduce the community. Come up here and stand by us for just a moment. We started at 5:30 and you missed your opportunity to pray, and I know as a preacher, that's going to just be with you for weeks.
That's gonna hurt and when you're in the army, you do pushups when you're late and as a pastor, you miss a prayer, you do even more pushups.
Okay, well, everybody, this is Colonel David Bowles. And I actually, look here Colonel, I was ready, boy, I was gonna say, actually, he gave me his biography and he said, "Would you please make me sound easy?" Because you know, when you're, when you're military, you get a big long thing. And I would tell you that I have met Colonel Bowles from the very beginning, actually, and we have made fast friends. And so I would love for you to come some other time and pray, I believe, but State Representative, fill in for you.
Which I'm very grateful for.
This man is also a pastor.
He is. He's a preacher too, isn't he? But on behalf of our city and our community, I want to welcome you and welcome you and your family to our community. You've already made a real impact.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I learned a good lesson tonight. These meetings don't happen in the courthouse.
No, they don't.
That's why I did a couple laps around there before I realized something's probably wrong here.
Oh, well, I'm gonna apologize that I should have drawn you a map.
It's on me, yeah. Hey, they're regular chaplains, no better, so I'm officially helping with that.
Well, okay. And I appreciate you coming, Colonel, and I'll see you before long, I know. Okay? And we also, I do not see Gene Newkirk. Gene was supposed to be here tonight and so he also is not in the house.
Second month in a row.
Second month in a row. So guys, we're gonna move right along to the fun stuff. And of course, we have, gosh, three, three things here and Steve's gonna actually take part in one of them. And that is the first one. And that is my friend, Steve Nutter, retired Colonel. Steve Nutter is the leader of the Pulaski Young Marines. And every year, they ask us to support Red Ribbon Week. And that's what we have here, we have a proclamation and so, and at the same time, Colonel, Steve is going to present his also.
I'm gonna turn this over to Young Marine Sergeant Minn. This is for the Army, so I'm gonna let him and the other three Young Marines.
Very good.
Make this presentation or receive this presentation.
Very good.
Sergeant Minn?
Front and center. There we go.
Right face. Forward, march. Left, 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 right, 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 strike. Halt. Left, face.
Come on down. Come on down, guys. You guys are impressive. Nice to meet you. Line up there for me, guys. Nice to meet you. Very good.
Red Ribbon Week, of course, I'm an old teacher and so I can remember for many, many years all participating in Red Ribbon Week. That's hard to say. So I have a proclamation here on behalf of the city of Waynesville to proclaim this Red Ribbon Week. America has been plagued by numerous problems associated with drug use and this is our way of supporting the Young Marines and their fight against it. Okay? And at the same time, Steve is here.
Good evening, everyone. I want to present a Missouri House of Representatives Resolution also recognizing October 23rd through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week. I have worked with a lot of legislation concerning our drug issues that we have. So to have some young folks like this participate in getting awareness out of how dangerous it is, is a real blessing. I do want to say this is a re-presentation. I actually ran them down a week and a half or two weeks ago. They were out doing what they do in our community. They do it quietly, not a lot of people know. They were down this time at the spring passing out water to runners at one of the marathons. They're constantly doing things around our community. So we want to thank these Young Marines and to Steve Nutter and those mentors and leaders. These guys and gals wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you spending a lot of personal time mentoring these young people. So I wanted to recognize that tonight. And so congratulations to you, thank you for what you're doing.
And could I add, on behalf of the city, some of you probably don't know this, the Young Marines have adopted the cemetery on Elm Street. And they clean that, they take care of it, they've actually replaced, I believe, fencing over the years, so we're very proud of that. So on behalf of the city, I'm going to present this to the leader. Here we go. And then Steve, you do the same and then I'll get on this corner and we'll take a good picture.
Right here.
Okay? Very good. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Go ahead.
Left, face. For ceremonial purposes only, forward, march, round step, march.
I like it. And Steve, why don't you stay for just a minute? We're going to do the domestic violence.
All. Right, face. Ready, see.
And Suzanne, would you come up? You're good. Again, we've had some little bit of issues with Michelle being sick and so we're gonna make sure that you get the original copy. It is probably on her desk, actually. Guys, with us tonight is the Executive Director of Good Samaritan and Genesis. And Suzanne is not only my dear friend, but so active in our community. And this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And many of you know that, I believe the color's purple.
It is.
Yeah, there you go. And sometimes you'll see a lot of purple ribbons and that kind of thing. But we're going to proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And these, I believe Genesis does several activities. I've mentioned several of your events where that's the speaker and that's the focus. Is there anything you would like to say?
Well, I just, first of all, I just want to thank the community. We're a local private nonprofit, been serving the community since 1975 and we could not do it without local support because that's what we count on. And just from our, just, I want to thank the city personally. The city supports us in ways, hanging our banners on the light poles. We recently were able to get some grant money to upgrade our food pantry, which we also operate, and the city was super generous in reducing the cost of our electrical costs and fees and different things for us to do that. So we're really grateful for that because if, you know, we can do that and save money that way, we can put our resources toward the people that we serve. And so we receive hundreds of calls on our hotline every year. We serve hundreds of people through our domestic violence shelter and our pantry. And again, we're here, we're locally helping the community. We could not do it without support of you personally and the city and other people that I see here, Steve and the rest of the community. So we're so grateful for everything that you do for us.
And of course, on the proclamation that we're gonna give, one of the comments says, "The Missouri Highway Patrol recorded last year nearly 46,000 incidents of domestic violence." And so it is a problem in our, in our country and in our state, much like the drug use. It's just a problem and we need to be aware of those. And so on behalf of the city, I present you this proclamation.
So much.
And we'll get you the original.
And I'd also like, we're doing something a little different this year to kind of commemorate Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Next week, Friday, and some of you I know have gotten invitations, personal invitations, but we're having an open house at the shelter. Starts at 11 o'clock and then after the kind of tour, we're gonna give people a tour of the building and kind of talk a little bit about our services, we're gonna do a domestic violence simulation. So that's an opportunity to kind of participate actively in a simulation and kind of see what it's like as a domestic violence victim, the different challenges and barriers. And so it's gonna be a real eye opener and anybody's welcome to attend. So if you're interested, just look up, look at us, look us up on Facebook and get the phone number and call us and we'll give you all the details, but anybody's welcome. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Well, we've got one more fun thing. Taylor Duncan, would you come up here? Now, everybody, if you're on Facebook, you know that Taylor is what we call the little ice cream girl.
We call her Thanks.
And very famous. First of all, she's my buddy, aren't you? Yeah, because I was your first mayor, right? All right. Guys, this is Taylor Duncan and she is the little girl who's homeschooled. And she came up with the idea, I believe Therese told me that she came up with the idea of her own, that she wanted to learn everything she could about, I wish I could lift her up and put her there so y'all could see her. She is the cutest little thing. That she can learn everything she could about the state of Missouri. Now, watch this. Taylor, what is the amphibian of the state of Missouri?
Bullfrog.
It's a bullfrog! What does Waynesville have?
Crocker.
Crocker? Okay. And let's see, what's the state dessert?
Ice cream.
Ice cream. And tell, can you, talk, talk real loud and tell them why?
Because the ice cream cone was invented in 1904, the St. Louis Fair, and the World of World Fair in St. Louis.
And so they adopted it as the state dessert. I bet half you guys didn't even know we had a state dessert. But that's why she chose ice cream. And so Taylor is here tonight to watch City Council. Because, can you talk loud again and tell them, what is your plan for the future?
Well, I can tell you what I'm gonna, what's gonna sound like. I can tell you what I'm gonna be when I grow up.
That's what I mean.
Councilman.
Councilman?
Mayor.
Mayor.
Governor.
Governor? She skipped you, Steve. Governor?
President. The president again, the governor again, the mayor again, the council again.
There you go. Okay? That's right. All right. At five years old, to have such lofty goals, right? But I would tell you this, most of all, to be full of so much knowledge. This, this child knows so much stuff. And let me tell you, I've seen some of her interviews, Therese. She could put some of these newscasters to shame because she can turn around and ask some questions. So I'm really proud of you, Taylor, and I'm, and I'm really proud that you're from Waynesville. And most of you know, I think I mentioned it last month, that I had gone to the MML meeting and we had a mayor's conference meeting and in that room was like 70, wasn't it? There was like 70 mayors and they pulled out a table full of ice cream and sprinkles and we all had ice cream with Taylor again. But I believe I'm reading on the Show Me Ice Cream page that you've actually gone back and visited some more of these mayors.
Yeah.
The ones that you met there. So tonight, guys, I have a Good Citizen Award for Taylor. Okay? And so on behalf of the city of Waynesville, first of all, we are thrilled that you're from Waynesville. Her family, by the way, are Michael and Therese Duncan. They are my neighbors, actually, and they are a military family. So let me shake your hand, because that's what mayors do. And there she is. Let's see if we can, look here, look right up there, that girl.
Bye-yo.
There we go. Did you want one? Oh, you got, you got my rear end, didn't you?
I got it.
Okay. Okay? Thank you, you're a sweetheart.
Bye.
Bye-bye. I'll see you a little bit, okay? That was great. All right. And there is no Randy yet. Okay, so we'll go on without him.
He's with Gene.
And we're gonna go on to board, board and commission meetings. And our first one is my favorite group and that's the Park Board. And Sean Wilson is here, along with Amanda and my friend Lawrence.
Good afternoon. The last meeting was purely an informational meeting, we did not have a call. But I will share you some updates and a little bit of information, informational reminders. As far as the, there were no visitors, the meeting actually took place on 11th at 6:00 PM and the location was here this time. During the wintertime, we will not be in the parks having our meetings and we decided that was a smart idea.
Yeah, exactly.
Especially with all of the reports that we hear coming up. So I'll go on to the sports program, just, just one keynote I want to point out with this is, of course, last month I mentioned that, that Randy was the District Fourth Commissioner for the Cal Ripken Program, Babe Ruth Program.
Andy. Andy.
Did I say Randy?
Yes.
They rhyme. All right. Andy and his staff, they actually been doing a great job. And we just have to really understand how significant this is as far as what the way ahead, as far as what's gonna come to the city of Waynesville and actually the entire community. We know that our, our youth will be able to compete at a different level and they will compete in over 21 counties. They will have teams from, from around 21 counties, so this is gonna increase our competitiveness. But the other thing is, in two years, we qualify to host our own tournament, which comprises of anywhere up to 200 teams, or 200 mile ranges of teams. So that means that the tournaments could last two days, could be three days or whatever, but with that happens, it actually brings more people to our community. So I'll just say, get ready.
All right.
All right. We know that the 2nd of November, we have to sign up for the winter sports program. This is just a quick reminder, the 2nd of November is the end date for signing up for the sports, winter sports, which consists of basketball and cheerleading. And again, this year, the ages have changed, the age limits, and it's for ages five to 10. And for the basketball and for cheerleading, it's from five, age five to 12. They used to do up to 16, but this year, they restricted it down. I'm not sure why they did it, but that was the restriction that was put out. Reminder also about Fort Littlewood and the new Garrison Command Team, the reimplementation of the passes.
And how's that working?
For right now, it's, it's gonna go back to the way that it used to be. As far as the passes, they're gonna need passes to go to the installation.
But did it work during season, it work?
Yes.
Did it work well, though?
Yes, it did work well.
We had some challenges, Mayor. We did have some challenges on it. I think they worked through it, but we did have some challenges.
Okay. Very good.
So it was one, one challenge, two, three, four, five this year?
Several challenges.
We had several challenges, but we worked through them. As far as our splash park, moving on to the park superintendent, the splash park, of course, has been closed down because of the weather, they're winterizing it as well as the baseball field prep for next spring. So Randy is working on that as well as the Little Heroes Playground. We know between the last meeting and this meeting, there was a issue in the park where they closed the playground down, but it was basically for the safety of the community. So they closed it down to sanitize the entire park because they, they wanna make sure that the constituents and those that use the park are taken care of. So it was a, it was a right call, they had it done, taken care of as quick as possible and opened it back up for the use of, for the community. As well as that, I even seen a note today of someone giving praise to the, to the community.
I'm gonna read it in just a moment.
Okay. All right, I will leave that for you. And I'd just say, it's always good to share the good news.
Yes.
Of, of what our team has been taking care of, taking care of this park and making it available for, you know, for everyone's first opportunity to play in the playground or what have you. Did you wanna?
I'm gonna read this when you're through.
Okay. All right. New business. Again, this is just information for next year, 2019, the National Kids to Park Day. We have already tried to get people to participate in this event. We wanna make this a, a great event and I can share with you a little bit about the intent behind it. The intent is to expose the youth in the community to outside activities. We have several churches and local organizations and we plan to have even the AWRRC to participate and bring their race cars down. And this is all to expose our youth to another opportunity and maybe get them involved in some other things. So it's gonna be fitness and we'll see if we can get something. Everything is gonna be free in the community on that day. If you would like to participate, you could, I will, I will share the, the link with the city and they can post it, but it's a way that you can sign up. We wanna get somewhere between 15 to 20 organizations that has activities throughout the summer. This is another opportunity for us to share and expand our awareness for any programs that are dealing with the summertime because this is at the end of the school year, so to give the parents an opportunity to say, these are all these programs are going on. So our library, it was the first ones that signed up, the Pulaski County Library, they always support anything we're doing in the park as far as community is concerned, but we just wanna get everyone signed up. It's free to sign up. If you have something for our youth as far as a skill, a talent, one church is gonna teach children how to fish. So we have others that's gonna teach how to plant and make their own compost. It's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of different things that we're gonna have outside. So we want to really generate, get everybody in the community involved on this and make it a great event that day.
Need to get ahold of the conservation department.
Okay.
Remind me and I'll, I'll get you in touch with Casey Simmons.
I've got her number.
Yeah.
I do the same thing at school. They'll bring cane poles, they'll bring all kinds of stuff.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
We definitely wanna, anybody we can get to make it a, a great event, it's more than welcome to join.
Very good.
We don't have any new information as far as the parks. Again, this is just informational brief and I'll make this, this part brief, what we have coming up for events. Of course, this is a busy month. The 13th of October was Oktoberfest, of course. I went, it was a lot of things going on on the, on the 13th. On Saturday was a very busy day. I walked through and it was a, it was a pretty good crowd that was out there and we enjoy ourselves. I got me a turkey leg. And also, we have the, on the, we had the Free Women's Center, Pulaski County Night Annual Walk for Life fundraiser. On the 20th, the Book of Acts Revival Church Gospel Singing and Picnic, the Frog Fest 5K Run. Both of those are going on on the 20th. The Frog Fest 5K Run is actually gonna take place here and I believe they start at 8:30 that morning. And they have a Facebook page up, so if you want more information, just search that in Facebook and you'll, you'll come up with those, those events. On the 21st, we have the Trooper Treat and the 35K. On the 27th, the Frog Fest Group 5K Doughnut Run. The 28th, the Knights of Columbus Soccer Challenge. And of course, the 31st, we'll have the annual Pumpkin Fest. Last year, we had over 2,500 kids that came through and parents. We have a lot of people participating this year, a lot more of our churches and local organizations making donations to make this. Both of those are going on on the 20th. The Frog Fest 5K Run is actually gonna take place here. And I believe they start at 8:30 that morning. And they have a Facebook page up, so if you want more information, just search that in Facebook, and you'll come up with those events. On the 21st, we have the Trooper Treat and the 35K. On the 27th, the Frog Fest Group 5K Donut Run. The 28th, the Knights of Columbus Soccer Challenge. And of course, the 31st, we'll have the annual Pumpkin Fest. Last year, we had over 2,500 kids that came through and parents. We have a lot of people participating this year, a lot more of our churches and local organizations making donations to make this a safe event for, again, the youth. Our next meeting will be on November 8th at 6:30 or 6:00 PM. Our next board meeting on November 8th at 6:00 PM. And we always invite people out. You have ideas to come join us. We want people to visit. That's why we were going out to the parks, we wanted to kind of expose them and give everybody an opportunity to interject their ideas and thoughts. Are there any questions?
Sean, when we go here on Jeff in just a moment, be sure and take his information and call him, would you? Jeff Malidi, I'm gonna put him on the park board. But something that Sean has been referring to is, I got this, I believe, yesterday or maybe today on Facebook. And it was from, I believe, Therese, I believe you know this lady. She had broken down in front of your house. And Ashley, Therese helped her with something else. And then later, she wrote this on the Facebook, and I'm gonna read it to you. "It's great to live in Waynesville. As most of you know, I am a nurse who works with disabled adult individuals at a day program. I want to say this community has come together to support special needs in our area, and I want to mention the Little Heroes Playground." I'll try not to cry. "I have individuals who have never been on a swing or got to experience a playground before. Individuals who've never been to a playground because they're confined to a wheelchair, but they can actually maneuver around the new playground and feel a sense of freedom they would not otherwise experience. To hear the scream of excitement when we pull up at the playground is priceless. Wow. Our community made that happen. So a big thank you to our community for making such an impact on the lives of the people that I work with. I see such kindness and compassion when we're out in the community, which in turn makes our jobs much easier. I can't thank everyone enough." Kind of makes it all worthwhile, doesn't it?
Yes.
And I'll remind you that our community raised over $250,000 for that playground. That's amazing. Okay? And any other questions for Sean? Okay? I have an appointment to the park board. Most of you will remember who left us.
Richard.
Thank you. Dolphin, or Dolphin. Rick left us. They moved away. And so I would like to appoint Jeff Malidi. Jeff is my neighbor also, and I think he'll be a good addition with your group. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Clarence, second by Ed. I'll look this way next time. And Madam Clerk, what you call the role?
Councilman Volker.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
That passes. And Jeff, welcome to the park board. We appreciate all the people that volunteer in our community. Thank you, Sean.
Right, thank you.
And with your permission, counsel, let's go back and pick up Randy Beck, because he came in the door. And Randy, we were told that you were told the wrong time, so we will forgive you, so...
Randy, you didn't have to see Gene Newkirk out the parking lot.
Gene didn't show up.
And Gene's hard to miss.
Of course, all of you know Randy is the director of our Lassie County Growth Alliance. Randy Glenn, head.
Well, it's glad to be here. What I come to talk about tonight, we had a board meeting yesterday, and we got a situation. And we didn't... We wanted to make sure, the board wanted to make sure nobody was blindsided by this. As most of you know, we get a... Well, we've been the operator of the license office for, I believe, 10 years now. And our contract is up in February. So within the next two weeks, we'll get a request for proposal. And within a month, it has to be turned back into the state. Here's the situation. The license office makes a fraction of the income when we took this on. And between online licensing, like I'm sure Alan, you probably got the permanent trailer license now. We get $250 per transaction down at the license offices. But the transactions have basically gone down, and of course, the costs have gone up. Labor costs, utilities, maintaining the state's equipment. And the state keeps on putting more on us in costs, too. And so basically, we're just not cash flow right now. And so the concern with the board is not only the loss of revenue to the PCGA, but what's happening in other small markets like ours is they're closing these license offices down. And of course, here, especially at Fort Lindwood, it's almost like any utility or public service. If they don't have a license office here, we're gonna have to go to Mary's County or Phelps County or Leclae County. Now, I guarantee you, they're not gonna be as adept at dealing with our military license situation as they are here. So like I said, it's twofold. The concern was actually our loss of revenue. Not only that, but there were especially concern about, you know, if we didn't bid on this, there's a chance nobody else will either, because it's really not, doesn't produce the revenues it did at one time. Now, there's a chance an individual could take it over and work it as a family-run business and, you know, not supplementing PCGA and taking off that, you know, that step. But we don't know if anybody's gonna bid on it or not. So what we're doing is being more proactive, looking at ways we can maybe even keep it going and keep operating. But we're gonna have to get our costs down. So one potential is looking for another space that we could get maybe at no cost even. You know, that, whether it be in one of the city halls. My board asked me to basically talk to all the cities in the county. Because this, you know, the more they thought about it, the more this is a situation for the citizens, too. So what I'm here to do is just give you a heads up on this. We don't even have the RFP in yet, but we know it's gonna be here in the next couple of weeks. And we don't want to be into December and saying, community, we have a problem. So...
Have you talked to the county, Randy?
No, we had our board meeting yesterday, and that put me on the agenda tonight. You're the first ones I've talked to.
Because the jail, because the jail moving out will be interesting.
And this is kind of to get you thinking about it. You know, we partner so well with everybody. This is just another partnership that we don't want to lose. And we're gonna have to address our sharp falls in our revenue, too. But if we get in a play... But we're working the numbers right now. But, you know, like I said, this is more of a proactive action rather than being totally reactionary. You know, we've known this in our budget from beginning of the year. We've watched these revenues go down and down and down. There has not been a license office increase in 20 years.
Has anyone given feedback to the state?
Oh, yeah.
About the absolute lack of any kind of profitability of these things?
State's well aware of it. And actually, there is a group that's formed, there's a License Office Association, I've attended the meetings, that is planning to put a big increase, you know, at $250, you know, a big increase, but there isn't gonna be a major increase to anybody. You haven't increased the fees in 20 years. It's ridiculous. But they are gonna make a move now with the new governor, new legislator, to put that on the ballot this year. The last time they did that, it might have been five or six years ago, the governor vetoed it. Steve supported it, it passed, but the governor vetoed it. So they think this is the best window we've had in a long time. So, but here's the problem. We've got to bid on this now. And if the governor vetoes it or it doesn't pass, we're stuck with this for five years. And at the rate it's going, we're gonna have to come out of pocket and operate the license office with no problem. So it's just a heads up.
It'll have an impact, too, on the organization.
What's that?
It'll have an impact on your organization.
Yeah, it is already, because we actually, you know, this is... It's really, since they did online, it took a big drop. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to address that, too. You know, we've been really busy, we've been working with Waynesville, and a couple proposals recently, and then done industrial park, working with the county on the new opportunity zones we've created in the north and chair of the county. Been working with AMRPC on, working with them, helping them get some grants for the county. So, you know, thinking at the airport, there's so many things going on, we're involved in. And, you know, we don't want to lose our organization either, because it's been a link with SOP and the tourism, we're working tourism on expanding that. So there's so many things going on now. You know, we just hate to go away, too. So that's why I said, this is just a heads up, and put your thinking caps on, and, you know, Bruce can get with me, you know, and we can just... You know, this is a community thing. You know, we just really can't lose that office, can't lose the PCGA either. So that's...
How about the new IDs when they come out next spring?
I'm telling you, everything's a challenge down there. My wife is supposed to work five hours a week as the contract office manager. She works, she started out working 20 hours a week, she's probably got it down to about 10 or 15 now. But it's something constantly. We just changed all the plates out last week. They just put in a new card reader that's... So basically, the deposit's going directly to a bank in Jeff City now, happened this week.
Are the new plates out for the Vicentennial?
I got them on my truck. You want to see them?
I'd love to.
My new Martin is the first day, but really, I like them. Vicentennial with the river flow, red, white, and blue.
Yeah, I need one new one.
Well, thank you for bringing us the bad news.
Better now than in January.
Maybe Bruce, let's be sure, put this on our agenda for economic development, and we'll...
And if you want me to address or work with... Bruce can get with me on anything you want to do.
Okay. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
And we're sorry we told you the wrong time. Okay? Planning and zoning, I believe, again, we didn't have any business this month.
No, ma'am.
Alan, I missed you. We haven't had meetings, what, two, three months, maybe, three, four?
Let's hit the bars.
Let's do it. No. Let's hit the work, okay? And I did have an appointment, guys, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we had, I believe it was Dan Peterson that left us, moved away.
Yes.
And again, we appreciate Dan's work. And with some suggestions from members of the Planning and Zoning, I would like to offer the name of Yvonne Reeves Chong to serve on our Planning and Zoning Commission. I entertain a motion.
Okay.
Motion by Ed.
Second.
Second by Cecil. And Madam Clerk, what you call the role?
Councilman Volker.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman France.
Yes.
Very good. That's unanimous, and that passes. And now we go to our standing committee reports, and we have Rhodes and Grounds, Councilman Clark.
Thanks, Mayor. We met on October 11th. First thing out of the chute, we had citizen comments. We had Mrs. Lori Moore, who lives on LaSalle Drive in Ravenwood subdivision. She was there to discuss some stormwater drainage issues that her and her husband are having at their residence. Pretty much sounds like an each and every rain event that they're having. She was nice enough to bring some photos for us to look at. And there seemed to be some additional situations that are adding to their problems, or their other problems on their property because they are downstream, second to last house in the cul-de-sac. So Mr. Harold stated that the city, one of the things we talked about was possibility, look at the cost-share option that we're gonna look more into, that Mrs. Moore seemed to be amicable to. But we're gonna look at that some more in detail. One thing I wanted to do, the pictures were all good and well, but I wanted to go out personally look at it, so we're gonna set some time to me and Bruce and Mitch and whoever else, Clarence and maybe Mike, go out and look at it ourselves. And that way, we can kind of do some brainstorming of what we can do, and then get back with Mr. Mrs. Moore. The next topic of discussion was, there was a request by some of the residents and parents to put a stop sign on Francis Street. That's basically, there's on Francis Street at the intersection of Sunset. Police Committee, this had already gone through the police committee, and the police committee made a motion to add the stop sign. We had some discussion with it. Councilman France had some concerns about making a big change, stopping traffic only for a small portion of the day. Another thing that Mike had brought up was possibility of including some bus, some advanced warning signs, some bus stop ahead signs, and new LED light. Mitch, did you ever get... Is there an LED light in there?
There is an LED light.
There is an LED light. Okay. And that was one of the other things, was to look at that, see if there was, if it needed an LED light for the low-light hours primarily, where the biggest concern is in the mornings. Councilman Liberty made a motion to install a stop sign on Francis Street. There was no second to the motion, so the motion basically died for lack of a second. And I'm sure that that'll be brought up in the police committee report here shortly. Secondary to that was also a concern by some of the parents requesting that the bus stop in front of the Sunset Water Tank be moved up the hill about 20 yards. Chief Ordova's talking to Mr. Wilking about that at the bus corner. Basically, in a nutshell, we don't have any jurisdictional location of bus stops, so that's still a work in progress. And I imagine Chief will be getting with Bull on that to see what they can come up to revisit later today. Jared Street Detention. We're working on, working with our city engineer, John Doyle, and hope to discuss detention plans for the surrounding property owners within the next few weeks on the improvements of a stormwater detention off Jared Street.
Where is that, Bruce? Is that where it's located now?
No, it's upstream from that.
Where their building?
In the vicinity of, there's a small pond up there.
Oh, okay.
It's in the vicinity of that area.
Yeah, it's been there for years. I went up there a little bit, that's what I thought it was when I asked about it. It had been there for a year before the development even started, so... Next item of business was a discussion about Proposition D, which is on the November ballot for the motor fuel gas tax. Mr. Harold presented information for that. The proposal would increase, would add $6 million in revenue to the MoDOT, for MoDOT to fund local transportation projects. The state of Missouri is 49th, is the 49th state in the nation on motor fuel tax revenue. The initiative would give Waynesville about approximately $75,000 for local funding for local street improvements. Mr. Harold recommends supporting the proposition. Councilman France stated that his concern, that he is concerned about the 40% of the funds that will be going to the Missouri State Highway Patrol, which I finally heard that on the news this morning.
But it's not 40, is it?
40%.
16%, I thought. Anybody know? Okay. Okay. I'm gonna look into that.
We researched it, but we did not find the exact breakdown in the language that was presented.
Okay.
So we don't know if that varies per year, or if that's established. It didn't seem to be established.
Actually, I think I may go see the governor tomorrow, and I will ask him.
Okay, very good.
Because he's speaking on it tomorrow.
Right. Lieutenant Governor Mike Keel will be coming down for those who want to learn more. Proposition will be on the November ballot. Councilman Liberty made a motion to send the resolution supporting Proposition D, motor fuel gas tax to the city council. I made a second. It did pass, but one thing that didn't show up in the minutes that I will make sure everybody understands, I caveated my motion to send it to council with the fact that I do not support the motion, but I do support the motion going to Central City Council. Next item of business was, there was a parking issue behind the post office. Next item of business was, there was a parking issue behind the post office. We're still working with that, Mr. Harold and Mr. McDonald met with the new post mistress. About a parking issue behind the post office, they are having quite a bit of difficulty with the, the post office vehicles getting in and out of there. So there's, they're working through that process to see what can be done with the neighbors, to see what can be done to ensure that that means of ingress and ingress for the post office isn't blocked, so they can get in and conduct their business. We also reviewed briefly again the 2019 budget proposal, which we've done probably every month for the last three months, so nothing new to report on that venture. With the exception of one highlight is that we're looking at about $250,000 in transportation tax revenue. We're planning to spend about $295,000 to help increase money for roads using general Something that I've been working on for quite some time, making the city of Waynesville a more walkable community, especially along Historic Route 66. So Mr. Harold, he presented a TAP grant resolution, stated that this is the same grant we applied for and passed, which two or three times tonight.
We got one of them.
Yeah. And basically what this will help do is fund the sidewalk improvement on the north side of Historic Route from Morgan Street all the way to the Ruby Dew Bridge, tie it in the sidewalk down at Ruby Dew Bridge. There will be some areas along there, obviously, it's going to require some expensive work for retaining walls and things of that nature, but that's the purpose of this grant. It passed our committee unanimously.
Can I say something, Alan, while you're on that topic?
Yeah.
That's why sidewalks, that's why we've had to struggle so hard with that over the last few years, because one of the goals I had as being mayor was to make Waynesville walkable. Well, we're about one-fourth of the way. And it just costs so much. Anytime you have to put in retaining walls, it's almost impossible for us to have that much money. And so we did put the one section in there by West Side Baptist. Bruce and I have even talked about, if we get this grant, which hopefully we're going to pass here in just a moment, that we will maybe, where we can, add to it ourselves, you know, where we can, money-wise, to keep it going. I would just love to see our sidewalk go all the way out to T Highway. Wouldn't that be great? I mean, we have so many people to walk, and so that's what we're doing here. And the point is, tell the public, that's why we don't have sidewalks. You have to build retaining walls, and they're so expensive. Okay, Alan, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Finally, we had the street update and going over all the things that the street department has been working on. Excuse me. Mr. Harold stated that the city of Waynesville and city of St. Robert and MoDOT may be having discussions about lowering the speed limit on the, that portion of the I-44 corridor from Waynesville to St. Robert.
That hill?
Yes, ma'am.
Where they had all the wrecks, all right.
Yes, ma'am. So that's, that, we saw some legitimacy to that, so that's work in progress. Bruce and all the other parties involved will continue on that. And we had no further business.
Very good.
And thank God we had no close session. We all went on.
Any questions for Alan? All right, we do have two resolutions that we're going to discuss. The first one should be a fairly easy one, and that is, Councilor, proposed Resolution 014. Do you read this or not?
You can read it once.
Okay. Proposed Resolution 2018-014. A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or the city administrator to secure funding through the Missouri Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives Program for sidewalks located within the city of Waynesville, and establishing the mayor or city administrator as authorized representatives. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion from Alan, second from Clarence. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Faulkner?
Yes.
Councilman Davis? Councilman Clark?
Yeah.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Kindly?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. We also have a Resolution 2018-015. A resolution of the city council of Waynesville, Missouri, supporting Missouri Proposition D. And this, of course, is the motor fuel tax increase that is being put forward by Gasha, the governor, the lieutenant governor. And of course, MML is very much supporting this. Mr. Harold, would you address a few things?
Sure, Mayor. Of course, for many years I've been a representative, and I think Mitch is now a representative on the Transportation Advisory Committee for MRPC. So for many years, we knew this was a problem. And interestingly enough, if you heard Randy Beck today, he said it's kind of ridiculous to go on the revenue from 20 years ago. Well, that's exactly what we're doing with our streets and our roads. We haven't had a, we haven't had an increase for over 22 years, and so those dollars don't go as far as they used to. Several years ago, we saw, they saw this coming, and they were wondering if MoDOT was going to be able to come up, or Missouri was going to be able to come up with the matching funds from the federal government to, that they sent to Missouri to help keep the federal roads going. There was a, there was a threat for that. And of course, they closed many of their stations. You know, they closed Willow Springs, they kind of cut a lot of expenses so they could, so they could try to meet these challenges. If you look at some of the information we provided, Missouri's 49th of states for the fuel tax. And Missouri has the seventh, I think it's the seventh in the number of roads or the miles of roads that we have. So we're 49th in funding, but we have number seven in the amount of roads. That's not going to last forever, people. I know the legislature tried several times to present something to move forward, and it's, of course, it's needed more than ever now. And I think if this fails and we keep continuing, our roads will eventually get in such bad shape that it will cost much more money to fix them than they would if we spent more, more money a little bit sooner. Of course, I can say, I can testify that Waynesville needs more funding for roads too. We have a need to increase our funding in the city of Waynesville. And this, this funding would be shared by counties and cities alike. I think we would provide about $75,000 additional dollars to the city of Waynesville, and that would definitely help us as well. A lot of this tax is paid also, is paid by, 30% of it would be paid to visitors, people who are driving through Missouri, and of course are stopping and getting fuel. And even after this, after this is fully funded, we're going to be, we're going to be a lot lower taxes than like Illinois, Oklahoma, and some of those states have higher taxes than we do, and they also have toll roads.
In fact, I went to Oklahoma this weekend, and my toll road bill was $25.
Yes, ma'am.
Back and forth.
Okay. So that might be a future. I mean, they will have to look at other options if we, if we don't have a reasonable, you know, can't, can't come up with a reasonable alternative here. And as the mayor mentioned, I think the governor and the lieutenant governor are very concerned of how this impacts Missouri. And it's also a safety issue. You know, safe roads, a lot of our roads are in poor condition, a lot of bridges are in poor condition. You know, what happens if, you know, that would be terrible to have to close bridges or roads because we, we can't, we can't fund them. So I think this is common sense. I know nobody likes to support a tax. You know, that's, but you know, I think the importance of doing something to promote safe roads and drivable roads in Missouri is a very, very important issue that I think we need to address. We don't need to keep kicking the can down the road. We need to address that issue, because I think the problem will only get worse.
And I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but since I've been involved in local government, I can remember when MoDOT would just come in and put in the roundabout, for example. Well, in recent years, that of course, as you well know, council, did not happen. In fact, we did a cost share with them, and it cost us quite a bit of money.
Essentially, every project will be a cost share project. They are basically running the risk of not being able to match the federal matching funds, which would put Missouri in a very severe situation, so.
Okay. So anyway, I also, I'm like Bruce, I also understand there are people who are just opposed to taxation. And I understand that. We're all adults. I'm very respectful of everybody and how they choose to vote and how they use their votes. So we are going to present this, though, tonight. This is Resolution 20, do you, let's see. This is Resolution 2018-015. Did I read that already? And did I do, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Clarence.
I'd like to add to that.
Wait a minute. Go ahead.
I am not really one for tax, but unless we can find a better way to fix the roads, that's all I can think of.
Okay, so I have a motion. Good. A second from Cheryl. And now, are there any questions or comments? And of course, Clarence just made his. And would you try to not be, you know, long and get your point across? Mike?
Well, my main concern is, is that every time you see it on television and everything like that, you don't see that they're also advertising that approximately 40% of this money supposedly goes to Missouri State Highway Patrol. I would much rather, and it's only 10 cents in four years, we're getting more fuel efficient on the cars. That's one of the reasons that this thing is coming, is because they're not getting as much tax as they used to get. In fact, right now, our 17 cents buys approximately 7 cents, is what it buys in today's dollars. So, you know, but one of the big things I got was Mr. Stephen Lynch, our representative, voted no on it in the legislature because of some things that he saw that he didn't care for anymore. So I, I really think we need this. I really, I'd like to have it for the city, but I think if we made this thing to where all the money went to the roads and the bridges, then I, it would have my absolute support. But it not going to there, it doesn't have my...
Mayor, we cannot confirm the 40% number.
Okay.
So, and I'd like, I'd like to ask you, if you ask the governor, we'll do some more research, but the math that I've seen, it might be, I don't think 40% of this tax, the way they got divided, I don't think that that is correct or not.
I think it's 16.
Okay.
But I wouldn't have my house...
The way they talk, the state would get 166 million, MoDOT would, out of the 288 million that the state would drop.
Harold, do you know?
I don't have numbers.
Any other media, anybody media person, do you know? Okay? Any other comments here?
About, a portion of this goes to the cities and the counties.
Right.
So...
It seems like it was 23%.
Yeah, so, so I don't believe that the number is exactly correct, but we need to check on that.
Right, okay.
And I understand the 40% number worry, but if it's going to Missouri Department and the Highway Patrol, we've been not paying them enough to guard our streets and stuff also. So my thing is, is if it's going for the roads, it's going for the patrolling of the roads and stuff that, like that for Missouri, I'm not a big tax person either, but something has to be done. Something has to be done.
Ask anybody else? Okay, and we have a second, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Faulkner?
Yes.
Councilman Davis? Councilman Clark?
No.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
No.
Councilman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilman Kindly?
We're not counting?
No.
Councilman France?
No.
It's not passed. How many was that?
Four. Four voted in favor, I believe.
Four in favor, so it's tied. I believe the mayor can break a tie.
Oh, this is my first time. That's the first time, is that right, my counselor, before I do this? I vote yes.
Okay, it passes.
It passes. That's my first time.
What happened?
Okay, very good. Councilman France, utilities.
We called meeting door on October 2nd at 3:30. We had a forum. We started out with a review of the 2019 budget, which we've done for the previous two months, and nothing of significance has changed. So we moved on. Water, waste water rates. We are looking at, in fact, you'll see that we have an ordinance to raise out-of-city water rates to where it would be $14 availability charge and 35 cents per 100 gallons. So I did a little figuring, and if you use 4,500 gallons of water in a month, you'd have your $14 availability charge, and then you'd have 15.75 would be what the cost would be for that water. So your water bill would be $29.75 for 4,500 gallons of water. And that's, our city, average city bill runs about $26. So it's not a real significant raise, but I want to defer to Bruce for a second because I asked him to do some research and pull together what kind of money we have spent on the current system that we own to bring it up to the standards that are required of a municipal utility. Mr. Harold, please.
Okay, well, just running through some numbers. We've spent probably a little over $2 million on out-of-city limit water systems, and that includes, of course, a purchasing system for about $1 million. You know, I'm including Hunters Point and Northern Heights and High Point. You know, we spent a little over $1 million to purchase them. We put a lot of new meters in. We spent close to $100,000 on new meters. We spent probably over $120,000 on an eight-inch water line. Over half a million dollars for the water tower, you know, $550,000. More, 40, 50,000 to chlorinate, and about 200 or so thousand kind of bore under I-44 and get them all connected, interconnected. So we do a considerable investment on these out-of our city limits water systems, and we're just looking to recoup, recoup the money. As you know, when we bought Northern Heights, we did a analysis. We did, we did analysis, and we said in the first year, we're going to, you know, at the current rate, we're going to lose $21,000. In the second year, we're going to increase the rate to the rate that we just stated, and then, and then that's going to put us a little bit in the black. We really won't make a significant profit until probably the 21st year when we pay off the loans for that, for that system. So that was in our plan. That's what we told the Public Service Commission, that's what they put out to the, to the residents, what our plan was, to help us recoup the money. It is a little, Mr. France alluded to, it's more expensive to operate a system outside our city limits.
We've also provided some things, though. You know, there was no fire hydrants whatsoever in Hunters Point prior to this, prior to us taking over the water system. If those electric went out over there, we, there was no ability to push water up to the upper portion of that entire subdivision whatsoever. And they had approximately 15,000 gallons of total storage. Well, now we can push them water all the way from right here in town via that water tower that we put in to support them, and we could push water all the way to every person on that hill over there. Also, we found that we're going to have some excessive expenses on putting in the water tank for Northern Heights that we had not imagined based upon soil science. We also thought we was going to have a pretty easy go at bringing in water from that line that connects Hunters Point South Side to get out to High Point, but we found that the Forest Service says that they gave Le Cleed an easement, but that doesn't mean Le Cleed can allow us to use their easement. So we'd have a bunch of costs associated with getting permits, as well as an annual fee to the Forest Service to go in there. So now we're exploring alternate routes and easements to get to them, which is going to increase our cost. So we've got some things that we're working on to take care of the new systems as well as that. None of these propositions are cheap, and we're working on it. So those are two of the main reasons why this fee increase, as well as it was promised. And it will affect all facilities, all services external to the boundaries of our current city, city boundaries.
And we said that from the beginning.
Yes.
You said that, he said that, we said that from the beginning, that we are going to eventually have to pay, if you live in Hunters Point, you're going to have to pay what the city of Waynesville pays. We said that from the beginning, there was nothing hidden. I've had a few people contact me and, you know, accuse us of doing things behind the back. I said, no, it was all upfront.
Yep, in fact, disallowed.
They paid $8 for a water bill every month. That's ridiculous. I'm sorry, it is.
That was one of the reasons the system was sold to us.
Yes.
Because as an individual utility, it came under the purview of ESC, Public Service Commission. They would not allow them to raise the rate beyond where it was. And so he was actually, the owner of that, those systems, was actually having to subsidize them to do that. And so, I mean, he was losing money every month. So that's why he even came to us to buy those facilities.
You know, and even though this was a business decision for the city of Waynesville, obviously that's, we've got to look at that, it's also something for their future, to protect their water. You know, I liked how you described all the different things that we've done for them in Hunters Point, and especially in the two new places. I had somebody that was very, very rude to me about this, and I actually said to him, you know, that water system was for sale for several months. You guys should have stepped in and bought that thing. You know, citizens could have done that. But instead, the municipal, you know, our municipal government did. So, so anyway, I don't think we're being abusive.
On moving on, electric power factor. We were fined $1,600 based upon us not meeting the goal of 96-plus percent. We're running at about 93%. And Mr. Sheldon, our electric supervisor, provided us with a means of meeting that by putting in some capacitor banks at the substation. And so the utility committee voted to do that, and that will fix this. And he also brought up another point that we are continuing to discuss in committee, and we will continue to discuss that next month, but it's not for this portion of meeting yet. We also... We also were presented with a, we'll see an ordinance on a potential incentives to convert to high-efficiency electric and electric gas slash gas appliances, such as dual-fuel furnaces and stuff like that. And what is being proposed is that we put $10,000 in the budget and for people that apply for, and based upon the equipment they purchase and that, that we as a city would possibly grant them up to $500, depending on their application for that money. And so, you'll see an ordinance on that. But that is all due to the current FERC case, which is our natural gas transportation case that we're dealing with at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which we talked about a little bit last month. It's still ongoing, but the current rate increase they're asking for, we pay $22 right now per deck of turn for transportation, and the pipeline is asking for $52 per deck of turn. And we got a, a hold on that till December 1st. Hopefully, this will all be worked out prior to then, but if it's not, it will go into effect December 1st.
Can I ask a question, Bureau Bruce? And I've been traveling a lot, so I wasn't at the committee meeting for this. The grant that we would give our citizens, is that, for example, if Lawrence got a new refrigerator that is more efficient? Or does it have to be off of propane or gas?
We're focusing, Mayor, we're focusing on reducing high propane costs and natural gas costs.
Okay, so probably be furnace, furnace.
Furnace, things like that. We haven't established all the policies, but that's the procedures, but that's the focus of this program.
Okay, very good.
Water towers. We had a delivery of some of the components of the water tank that's going on Sunset. They've had some issues with other projects at the company that's supposed to be putting it together at other locations. So, ours has been delayed. Hopefully, it'll be done, or we will start work later on this month. But right now, we are experiencing communication problems with the corporation. Water line easements, I've already creeped the water line easement portion to High Point. Natural gas pipeline repairs, early this month, late September, people saw us down off the Riverview Bridge. Basically, what we found is that one of the old valves on that main line had a slight leak. And so, we replaced that valve, but there was absolutely no loss of service. And that was really due to all our people being down there, working diligently. In fact, it was like a day, a quarter worth of work that they were doing down there. And it was an all hands-on deck. Electric availability report was presented, and we had four basic outages this month. EPA audit, we are EPA audit, basic glasses of our transformers that have PC valves in them, and we passed with flying colors. Natural gas rate case, still at the FERC. When, we got the first inning behind us, and we did good, but that doesn't mean by any means there's still eight innings to go. So, we don't know how it's gonna come out. We're working, knowing. We have the attorneys working on our side and our consultant. The wastewater department worked on 15 different work orders. Our electric department installed eight streetlight work orders, seven tree work orders, installed two new services, and one new net metering. So, that's now, we have three net metering deals in.
Bruce? Do we have three or two?
That was our third one.
Yes, we got to go, that's the third, that's right.
And what I'd let our citizens know is that there are only 10 LED streetlight changeouts left to be done on our city streets.
I was gonna ask that.
Out of all those that we had. Now, that doesn't mean our dust-to-dawn lights and stuff, we have not done any of those unless they had to be, they went out or whatever, it had to be replaced.
I have a lot of comments about those lights, good ones.
Oh, good. Because when we, before we ever started this project, our costs, we checked them out on individually metered lights, and they were only costing one-third of what the old streetlights were costing to run for a month, as well as they provided more light. So, hopefully, the citizens like that. There was a need for a closed session, which we went into. Based upon a motion by Mr. Conley and a second by myself, we went into closed session for a very short period, and we came out at 4:21, and I adjourned the meeting. Our next meeting is November 6th at 3:30, subject to your questions.
Very good. You are busy committee. Anything? We do have an ordinance, actually, we have two.
Yes.
And this is ordinance number 2337. Counselor?
Thank you. A proposed ordinance establishing the water rates.
Could I ask the counselor and Mr. Harold, have you turned your speakers on?
Oh, sorry.
Tim asked me to be sure and do that.
Okay, I'll try this. A proposed ordinance establishing water rates for out-of-city limit customers furnished by the city lanes on fixing and effective date. A proposed ordinance establishing water rates for out-of-city limit customers furnished by the city lanes on fixing and effective date.
Very good. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike, second by Mike Curtis. And I believe we did discuss it quite a bit, but are there any comments or questions? All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Faulkner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liberty?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Kindly?
Yes.
Councilwoman France?
Yes.
Very good. That's unanimous, and that passes. We also have ordinance 2338. Counselor?
An ordinance establishing an incentive program to assist citizens in converting to efficient energy savings alternatives fixing and effective date. An ordinance establishing an incentive program to assist citizens in converting to efficient electric savings and alternatives fixing and effective date.
Very good, and I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Clarence, second by Cecil. And do you have any comments? And I believe I wanted to point out, this is a pilot program. We're going to see how it works and if it works, right?
Right.
Okay, any other questions? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Faulkner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kindly?
Yes.
Councilwoman France?
Yes.
Very good. That's unanimous, and that passes. We will be looking to get that out to our citizens. Finance and Human Resources Committee, Councilman Liberty.
Meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Committee reviewed the bill. Motion was made by Councilman France to approve bill, second by myself. Vote was called for unanimous to pass the bill. Monthly budget review, Mr. Harold reported to committee that as of October 9th, we had 3.4 million in city bank accounts, 2.9 million in reserve, and restricted account over 468,000 available money. Review of 2019 budget. Mr. Harold provided the budget overview. Said we will have some minor changes, final review. The airport received several grants in 2019. Over 3.5 million in a new terminal and other things, taxiway and so forth. Open letter, MML, on proposition D, we've already discussed that. Mr. Harold stated, airport board had budgeted for fuel truck in 2019 budget, and committee voted and approved proceeding with this request. Other business, Mr. Harold informed that our electric department was requested go to Florida to help clean up hurricane, from Hurricane Michael. We had three men and two trucks went down and provided assistance, which they returned this evening. And we're very proud of the work they've done. Mr. Harold also reported the planned meeting with MoDOT to discuss possibility of lowering the speed by 44. We discussed that some.
Have you done that already?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
It was stated we had need for closed session for legal personnel, went into closed session. Can you break out? Closed session, six oh six. And meeting. At 6:06, it was adjourned.
Very good. We also have the proposed budget, and I don't know about you, but it was a little light reading, right? And Bruce, is the attention just for them to study this, and we'll have an ordinance next month?
Sure, I mean, our, our plan was to present the draft budget, of course, at this meeting. We've been talking about it all the committee meetings, and it's up for approval in November. We will probably make some changes here and there in it, but essentially, it's a $20 million budget. Quite, quite a few grant projects, over three, three and a half million of grant projects. And of course, a lot of capital improvement projects, like a new bathroom in the park, improvements to our rail, and improvements to a lot of our utility systems, so.
Very good. So, take that home, and we'll be expecting an ordinance in next month. Police Committee, Councilman Conley, and before you talk, and I just wanted to point out that the issue about the stop sign up on Sunset came about because a citizen contacted me and asked about safety around the bus stop. And actually, they came asking our police what their take on it was, and that's how it ended up being discussed. So, I just wanted to be sure and tell you that. Councilman Kindly?
Well, since Mike has called his up for a debate, can you go ahead?
Oh, is, I think Mr. Conley is the one that makes the real.
Well, you gotta let him finish.
Okay.
Okay. Since, since Mike has called his up for a debate, and since I forgot that I had changed the date of the meeting, and therefore was not there, I was at the funeral in Lebanon. I will say one thing, and I'm gonna turn it over to Callum Lewis.
Okay.
As far as the stop sign, as I recall, a number of years ago, people up there requested a lowered speed limit. They signed a petition, and the city council agreed. And the first people that got tickets for speeding up there were people who had signed a petition to have lower. So, if we go ahead and put a stop sign in, I'll almost guarantee the first person who gets a ticket for running that stop sign will be one of the people who requested it. But having said that, Mr. Liberty?
How do you top that?
I know.
Meeting was called to order at 3:30. There were no citizens present. Did co-book review, Mr. Harold presented co-book to the committee. Mr. McLeod removed any charges that are not cross-tuned to city level. Committee members will review and be ready to discuss in November. Francis Street concerned, Chief Cordova stated that numerous individuals were expressing concern about the safety of the children sitting in bus stop on the corner of Francis and Sunset during early morning hours. He stated there's been a request to change the yield sign to stop sign. Councilman Scholter, Councilman Brown, and myself all expressed our desire to keep the children safe. We called for a vote, and the vote, it passed to put a stop sign in place of the yield sign. Bus stop safety concern, Chief Cordova stated the kids currently sit bus stop on the road right next to Sunset Water Tank. There's a concern about their safety. Chief Cordova has talked to the bus barn, and we are awaiting their response on what they would like to do with this. And Mr. Harold provided committee with current budget year-to-date as opposed to 2019. Stated our exorbitant sharing funds that we spent this year. Police Department, officer resignation, Officer Ryan Hick resigned as a full-time police officer, and he is now a school resource officer, and I believe a reserve officer for Waynesville Police. Thank you, Chief. Other business, Mr. Harold stated that City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and MoDOT may be having discussion about lowering the speed on I-44 during a certain section. And there was no need for closed session. The meeting was adjourned at 4:04.
Well, and you didn't mention about Onyx being sick. How is Onyx?
Very good. He was acting about two weeks.
Very good. I did not know that. That's our, which dog? Have to have surgery.
Don't forget Officer Bruce, another year older.
Oh, there you go.
Worker's calm.
I, I'm going to look at Mr. Harold and ask, what, what was our consensus on the resolution about the stop sign? Do we want to go ahead and vote on this tonight, or do we?
Well, I believe the Police Committee recommended to go to the city council, so I would proceed on that. I did not, it did not get the recommendation out of the grounds, but we have recommendations.
Okay.
I believe it's unanimous, our Police Committee, to send it forward to city council.
And again, let's just, we'll talk a little bit here. I guess I should do a motion first, and then we'll talk about it. So, we have resolution 2018016. It's a resolution to approve the replacement of a stop sign on Francis Street at the intersection of Sunset Drive and Francis Street in Waynesville, Missouri. That is in front of Mr. and Mrs. Cole's house as you're going to Ravenwood. Most of you know where that is. Mike, I know you know where the, what that is. As a resident up there, how do you feel about that?
How do I feel about it? When you come up over that hill, you have to slow down anyway. I don't, the intent of a stop sign is not gonna make that intersection or that bus stop safer for those kids. I, I don't think it's gonna help.
Okay.
I think the yield sign is plenty to slow down. You have to make that turn anyway, so a stop sign is not gonna
Right.
help the speeders.
Because the kids are sitting where the stop sign's going in it.
Yeah.
That's, so you don't even stop till, in fact, the picture.
You're gonna be on the stop sign, but at the bus stop.
Yeah, I mean, they were, the picture that was presented to the committee had the kids sitting towards your house, Mike, around that corner, where they'd be already stopped.
Well, the yield sign slows them down. A stop sign stops them. My concern is the children getting run over. Five seconds is a very little price to pay for the safety of the kids. If somebody can't stop and wait for maximum, or actually, yeah, maximum of five seconds, but really, three seconds for the safety of the kids, I just don't understand.
Hold your thoughts for a moment. I kinda got ahead of myself because I got so excited to ask Mike. But we have a resolution here. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second by Cheryl, and now, more discussion. I know the chief is in the back of the room, and do you have anything you want to add to this?
Stop sign, just like you said, the stop sign will stop. The yield sign will break. Right now, the issue we're having is a little bit dark. That issue's gonna change right around late. That issue's gonna change in a couple weeks. When the time changes, it'll be a lot different. Right now, the concern is it's dark, and as they're approaching, that intersection as well is. As they're approaching that intersection, it would be nice, in my opinion, if they were a little slower. I don't know any other way to do it than to put a stop sign. Do we need a stop sign there the entire time? No. No, just, just for the pickup. Do I want one there during that time? Absolutely. And it's one of those things where the stop sign would absolutely make a safety for those kids, in my opinion. It absolutely will.
Okay, so.
It'll be used all year.
Chief, and I understand what you're saying, but I think a better resolution would be to put one of those school bus sign warnings, bus stop ahead.
We're gonna proceed. I was gonna sign it and bring it up to the National League Committee. I was gonna request those, anyway.
That you're putting on Sunset and then coming up the hill?
Both ways, yes ma'am.
Yeah, and I, you know, if we could move those kids up Sunset, that would save everything right there instead of, because you have to slow down to make that corner. That corner is, again, putting a stop sign there, if somebody's gonna run that stop sign or go through there too fast. sign or go through there too fast, they're gonna lock it up right there at the bus stop. It would be more, make more sense to move that bus stop up Sunset. I know the bus has to make the turn, but the kids could walk to the bus then.
It is something we're looking at. The car over at the bus barn has been set up to slow them up. They've actually come out there with me and we've discussed options.
Okay.
We're just trying to play it by ear right now. Their request is, and we can see when the time changes in just a couple of weeks, it's gonna be too dark. It's what we have right now, okay, is whether to move them where or to move them to the other issue.
They shouldn't be going fast enough to have to lock up the brakes in the first place with the speed limit there.
And Bruce, do you have anything to add to this discussion?
When I asked the chief what his recommendation was, he recommended that we put a stop sign there for the safety of them. I understand everybody's concerns and, you know, I don't agree with unnecessary signs either. A lot of places we've had a lot of signs here and there, but I, I would kinda listen to the parents most of all.
Right.
It's good that we have our opinion, but I think that I, I would consider the opinion of a parent of a child to be more important.
Right, and I'm just gonna throw this out. I know I have a motion and a second, but why don't we wait to see what the school does I stole that out.
I'd be okay with that.
Could've keep.
I'd have her be processed. Any legislative body or any people like this, it goes to committee, gets discussed for weeks and weeks and weeks. Before you know it, it'll be in the springtime. It was brought up, I think, as Clarence said, the same thing, the children, the chief feels that's probably important at this time. We always take the stop sign back out.
In a couple of weeks, when it's light out again, they have to pull the time? I mean. It's only needed for that short period of time in the morning when it's dark. And nine times out of 10, like every morning, there's a parent driving a red car that sits there and watches her, her children. So the other thing is.
Why are you so mad about the stop?
Can I finish? Can I finish? Bottom line, when we looked at T Highway, we looked at stop signs, we looked at stop lines, and what we thought was the stop sign and that would impede traffic and make it worse at that intersection. So I'm looking at, why don't we do measures that are less? And if we find that they do not work, then we take drastic steps. But anyhow, you know, I just think that bus stop ahead, because everybody in the neighborhood knows where that bus stop is that lives there, but we do have some people that come in off risky because it's shorter, and I will tell you, those are the guys that are speeding lights if it was through there, because they come past my house.
Bus stop ahead does not require them to do anything.
Well, for me, the bus.
So if they don't slow down.
For me, the bus stop ahead is about the same as people paying attention to the slowed-down school zone and they don't.
Ask the chief, ask the chief about the traffic that we had up there at East Elementary. We got signed to 25 mile an hour school zone. One weekend, how many tickets you write?
Yeah, that's what I said. Nobody pays attention to this.
Any other comments? Ralph, did you have any comment? Okay, anybody else? Well?
I just got, since this is a resolution and not an ordinance dealing with the regulatory sign, you know, God forbid we should have some upstanding citizen not stop at a stop sign, which is gonna happen. They can't even drive the damn speed limit up there.
Well.
Are they gonna be able to go to municipal?
What if, earlier in the week, there's seven forward that's authorizing, actually the city administrator to put in a stop sign and subject to veto by the council, so the ordinance is already there.
Actually, I could go ahead and put in a stop sign and then you'd have to veto it. That's right. But actually, we took the whole action for approval instead of a veto to this body.
We have done some interesting things.
But that's why, that's why a resolution is appropriate instead of an ordinance.
My thing is, if we, if we do something lesser, we're talking about kids here. So the only time that we would know that, you know, it didn't work is if something happened to a kid. I think that putting in a stop sign, going to protecting children is, is to me better than, okay, let's say I do lesser, I put a school bus stop ahead or whatever and a kid gets ran over or school bus gets rear-ended because people are stupid.
Okay.
I got one last thing.
Okay.
I got something else. Because it came up in our committee, chief is, do we have parents parking in the right of way at that time of day?
I'm sorry, sir, did you have?
Do we have parents parking vehicles within the right of way of that intersection in the morning? So parents, so the parents are part and parcel of the problem to put the stop sign up?
On the day that I did the audit, basically I went out there and watched and took some photographs. They were parking on Sunset from down prior Francis, so they were parking on Friday.
They used to park on the other side, on the other side, but that, the people that own that open lot, put up those stakes so they can't pull up the road. So now they pull up on the right side, the lane facing the wrong direction and park there.
My house, my house is in this picture. I've lived up there 26 years. My kids went to that bus stop. They were never worried about getting hit by a car and like Mr. Francis says, there's two weeks that it is dark, we've got the new LED light. Again, I think the solution, instead of a stop sign, would be to move the kids up Sunset a little. Move the, move the kids, because you're gonna have the bus stop and the stop sign in the same spot now. There's people that park there, they're gonna have to go around and stop again. I slow down that, you have to slow down to make that corner.
Yep.
Whew, we've had an interesting night. This has been the night of first, hasn't it, guys? So we have a motion and a second, and so we're going to address this. This is, again, is the resolution to place a stop sign on Francis Street. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Councilwoman Fulkerson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Clark.
No.
Councilman Curtis.
No.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Larry.
Yeah.
Councilman Conley.
I would go with the chief of the parent. Yes.
Councilman France.
No.
Passes.
And that ordinance pass, or that resolution passes. And so we will be placing a stop sign at Francis Street.
Right.
Okay. And, wow, moving along, the Airport Board. Councilman Davis?
I'm gonna defer to Bruce because I was unable to make that meeting.
Okay, we had the meeting on October 9th. We talked about the parallel taxiway. We were supposed to get that project underway early in October. We had a delay with the approval procedure going through Fort Leonard Wood and the Army Corps of Engineers, so we still have not resolved that as yet, but we're working on that approval process. We went over the budget, just the sample budget that you have in front of you. We talked to Mr. Clark. He was, he resigned from the airport to working out there. He's trying to get his commercial pilot's license and we temporarily assigned to Mr. McCruden at the airport. He's, he's moving on to another position too. So we're in the interview process, interview for an open position. We talked about the into plane contract and that's up at the Defense Legistic Agency there, a military, basically our military fueling contract that we've been working on for some time, so that's starting to move forward. We mentioned fuel cells. Fuel cells are continuing to move upward and we're feeling more of the army military aircraft. Mitch McDonald went to Michigan to attend a F-fuel conference to get certified on fuel handling and I believe that was a little tougher course than he anticipated, but he did pass that course in flying colors. We did look at the EAS proposals. We had, basically had four airlines that submitted proposals. We did, after a lot of discussion, all the proposals were very interesting and good, but we, the Airport Board recommending Conter Airlines as, as a alternative EAS proposal. And I did have some pictures and a little write-up about that. It's a little bigger plane, 30, you know, 30 passengers, you know, jet aircraft, you know, a little more, what more people are used to. And so we're working with them to get the alternative EAS proposal going. Should start up early, early of next year.
So this has been announced and has been approved by the?
This is not being approved by the Department of Transportation.
But it's our recommendation.
This has just been recommend, recommended to the Department of Transportation. So they're still working through that process.
Okay.
And I would like to say that, you know, we're very happy with Cape Air. There's nothing wrong at all with their proposal, but a nine-seat airplane could not handle some of the loads that Fort Leonard Wood was anticipating. I think at one point in time, one thing that I heard is sometimes they wanna send eight or 10 people together on a, you know, they want them to travel together. And of course, they could never do that on Cape Air. They'd always have to send them to St. Louis, you know, to get a plane there. So that was one of the factors that we had to consider. Very, very hard choice, I will have to say, very hard.
And I was just gonna say that, Bruce, that I wanted to say as the mayor, that, that probably I went to that meeting and it was one of the hardest things that I've had to do as mayor, because I have always been, you know, supportive of Cape Air. Cape Air has worked very, very hard to be good partners and it was a very hard decision. And I think that's true with everybody that was in the room.
Yes, it was.
That we hated it, but we felt like we had to look to the future.
Yeah.
You know, that we had to look to the future. We didn't want the airport to stay the way that it was, so.
We also talked about purchasing another fuel truck. You know, we have a fuel truck, but as you take on more responsibilities and more military aircraft fueling, it was very important for us to get a backup fuel truck out there, so we're, we're moving forward on that as well and we placed that, of course, in, in our new budget. Let's see, I think I mentioned that we are still, we received updates on the parallel taxiway, the new terminal project, of course, we're in, in the process to, to expand the existing terminal so we can hold more passengers. You know, now with the 30, you know, if we get a 30-plane jet coming in there, there's not room in the waiting room and there's not room in the other areas for that. So we're moving forward on, on improving, improving the terminal. We've had a marketing update. We talked about all day black block lead and we had a resignation from the board from Randy Frack. And that's the, that's the, okay, on the meeting.
Was Randy a Waynesville representative?
Yes, he, yes, he was. We'll talk about, we'll have to talk about that in the future.
Very good. Questions for Bruce? Lot of stuff with the airport, always something.
We do have an ordinance.
Yes, and I was just gonna say, counselor, I don't envy you reading this. Go ahead, Bruce.
This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number 1 to Ordinance Number 2297 between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in order to assist with the design of the parallel taxiway, wind cone, and fuel access road at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport, fixing an effective date. And the ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number 1 to Ordinance Number 2297 between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in order to assist with the design of the parallel taxiway, wind cone, and fuel access road at the Waynesville-St. Robert Regional Airport, fixing an effective date.
Very good. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Clarence, seconded by Cheryl, and now Mr. Harrell.
Just wanted to state that this actually, we've already had a grant on this. This basically gives us roughly about $200,000 more dollars in, in the grant from RODOT to execute the parallel taxiway agreement. So it's basically an increase. It's 90% funded by the Military Airport Program through the FAA.
Very good. Questions? Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Councilwoman Fulkerson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Larry.
Yeah.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman France.
Very good, and that's unanimous and that passes. We did, first, I can't remember why we canceled economic development, but there was a reason. And just wanted to mention a couple of things. We did not have a meeting this month, but I did want to mention, and I think it's in Mr. Harrell's update, that someone has bought the property downtown called Big Will's. And in fact, they have an demolition permit and we were very excited about that. It's probably, gosh, really the last bad piece downtown because it was a bit, kind of neglected. So we're very excited about that and glad to see something going on there. Also, I wanted to say to the public that the roundabout area is not going to be used for garage sale signs or meeting signs. The only thing that's gonna be allowed there are city-approved events. And so I wanted to say that to the public. Mike and I were just discussing the fact that because we've lost our newspaper, because we don't have the radio here in our meetings, you know, the only place people saw us until tonight was on Channel 12. And many times, Harrell, of course, does his blog, so a lot of people read it through that. I thought, I told Mike, I said, you know, people in his neighborhood didn't even know we'd been discussing a stop sign. And that's why you need local media, okay? And here, here is another example about the signs of the roundabout. And then I also wanted to show this to you. Got this in the mail. This is an annual event by the YMCA at Fort Leonard Wood, so it's the AS YMCA. And this is the Field of Heroes. Used to, I believe, last year it was in St. Robert and I believe this year it is also gonna be at Reed Park. They've had it downtown Waynesville. So if you're interested in that, that happens, of course, during the Veterans Day Parade. And the Veterans Day Parade this year is in Waynesville. And as an old history teacher, I'm kinda sad that November 11th this year falls on a Sunday and because it falls on a Sunday, our parade will not be the historical 11 o'clock. It will be at 2 o'clock on November 11th and it will be in Waynesville. And this year, your mayor nominated a veteran from our community named Doug Lawling. Now, some of you may not know Doug Lawling until I describe him. He is the trombone player who goes to Walmart during Christmas season. He is the trombone player who walks up and down the sidewalks in Waynesville for festivals and plays his patriotic music. So Doug Lawling was chosen by the chamber to be the veteran of the year and he will be the marshal of the parade. I'm very excited for Doug. And then one more quick little thing. This is the 100th anniversary of World War I and I have a special guest that's gonna ride with me in my car. His name is Jack Lindberg. Some of you know Jack too because he's, he's at every parade dressed up in primitive military uniform. And Jack is going to be dressed up as a doughboy and he's going to be riding in my, in my car. So I'm very excited about that. One story about Jack, right after my husband died, the next parade, he was dressed up as a little sailor and I said to Jack, "Jack, who are you representing today?" And he looked at me, he said, "Your husband." So Jack's kinda special. And so you guys be watching for him. That's kinda cool. We have one other item of business and that is the reappointment of Ralph Muckslow as our city counselor. And I have a, just a letter of appointment and I would suggest this to you council members and I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Everybody all together now. Motion by Mike Curtis, seconded by Alan, and I believe this would be very proper for us to just say. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Work for me.
Okay, thank you, Ralph. You read those things really well. And Mr. Harrell, you have really some good updates. I stole one of them from you.
Oh, sure. We've talked about most of the things. I'll just hit a few highlights here and there. The budget is looking good. We've completed 75% every year and revenue's at 73% and expenses at 71% for a net income of $155,000. And really proud of actually our linemen. We sent, you know, Daniel Sheldon and J.P. Varner and Cody Bond down to Florida and they were down there for eight or nine days assisting the people, helping to get thousands of people with their electric back on in there. And they came back safely and they did a lot of good work while they're down there, so I'm very proud of the work they, they've done down there. Of course, we're always glad to get them back home too. I also want to mention, I think we've talked about many of the other things, but I want to mention that we did get the approval for the recycling grant.
Yeah.
So we're gonna buy some additional recycling bins. I think that was successful in the past and I appreciate Amber and Tracy York's work on working on the grant. And also do want to mention that, that we recently had the Missouri Public Utility Alliance. Of course, that's a very important organization for us, for our, you know, electric, our, you know, water, sewer, and natural gas, of course. And Mr. Francis was recognized for his service to our city and our utility and with the Public Service Awards. So really appreciate Mike and his, his work, you know, with, with the city and with our utility and I think that was recognized by our, by the Public Utility Alliance.
Very good. Do any of you have any questions for Bruce? We've had a long meeting tonight, this is a very long meeting for us, we're usually out of here long before this. So, it's been an interesting meeting tonight, I appreciate all your goodwill toward each other. Let's have a few comments, and then we'll adjourn. Sherrill, we'll start with you.
Halloween is coming up, so we're going to be very careful of the children walking around in the neighborhood.
And can I interrupt and say, our hours in Waynesville are 6 to 9. Cecil?
I only have one comment, and this is kind of a community comment, there's a new place in St. Robert, and if I knew the name of it, I would give you the name, they have shakes and herbal teas and stuff like that, I'm not really into that, but they offer cardio classes on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. My daughter conned me into going. I was tired at the warm-up, but I made it all the way through, and they're free.
Whoa!
They have those classes, the lady comes in and donates her time for free, and they're great classes, it's one right there on the spur.
Very good. Alan?
Is that healthy stuff?
Yeah. Exercise is, yeah.
Exactly.
The only comment I got is Commissioner Newkirk can't find his way to City Hall, can we get the Eastern District Commissioner, since we are under his purview, to come and give us a break on the jailhouse?
I will make a phone call.
Lou should leaned over in my ear a couple of times and said, "We've done some unusual things tonight," and I just want to say, fellow councilmen, I'm proud to serve with you, even when we differ in opinion. Listen, our government in our country's not working because they make it personal, there's nothing personal. We debate, we come up with the best decision with the information we have.
I like it, I like it a lot.
I second that one.
Jerry?
Very good. I want to thank everyone for coming to Southern Gospel Reunion. It was an overflow crowd, and please come in next year.
I was out of town, because I usually go every year, I love those. Clarence?
First, I'd like to congratulate Mick for the course that he made in church, from what I understand, it was a very challenging course. His hair is a little grayer.
Wow.
I thank Mr. Harrell and the department head for all the work that they've done on the budget, thank you to the city staff and the employees, you make us look good. And cold weather's coming, you may want to make sure you have your furnace checked and, or serviced, and if you have chivvies, that you have a fire in.
Can't edit it.
One of the problems sitting in this end is it gets colder before it gets to-
Next month, I'll start down there.
We have had an interesting meeting, and like Mike said, we disagree without being personal about it. It's very unusual for this board to have that many noses on it.
It is.
Because usually we're pretty good, but I think I will stop right there.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mike?
For those of you who are looking for foistas, they're being, you can order them through the Waynesville-St. Robert Senior Center, and they'll be delivered later on this year. I would sincerely appreciate y'all exercising, coming out, that's one of their main fundraisers. I also had one of my constituents come up and talk to me in my driveway, and they wanted me to give kudos to the utility department, because he'd gotten a call because his water uses seemed to be excessive, but he doesn't, he waters, he has a sprinkler system in his yard, he'd been sprinkling some brand-new grass twice a day, but he says, "Man, that was pretty thoughtful of them to get hold of me and let me, you know, just kind of warn me." And he says, "That was nice, they didn't have to do that." They do that throughout our city when they see someone's use looks out of character for their normal. So, thank you, Tracy, and thank you, Hope.
And I will end, and try not to be too much of a downer, but I did want to say this, as mayor, I get to do a whole lot of interesting things, and sometimes I get to do some sad things. And today, I attended a funeral of a young captain at Fort Leonardwood who committed suicide. I just want to remind everybody that there's an alarming number of soldiers who are killing themselves, and I would, I would remind everybody, be kind and be thoughtful to people.
Amen.
Because you never know what they're fighting.
Yes, ma'am.
And, Mike, ditto what you said, that was wonderful, I appreciate that. So, is there anything else for the good of the city? If not, adjourn, thank you.